You did it.
She did it.
How are you?
I have, I have two.
Two?
I got. Nope. I didn't know I was supposed to wear, I mean, I can't. Yes, or a quarter set. Steve and I are the fashion police of the council. We was like white shirts.
Oh. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so I think you should be good today.
I think so.
Yeah, let me know if you need anything else.
How are you?
And your things in time, right?
I was just ready for the meeting. Six.
Seven. Get it done faster.
How are you? I don't say that to them, but. Yes. Yeah. I don't know, he's over thirty one. Yeah. He's almost thirty. He's been out for a few years from law school. Family has an actor in him now. Nice. Getting back to the law, he's got that interest. Help us out. He's up doing the help. Up all in, right? Yeah. Well, he, like he said, this is hometown, so. Likes it here. He just now, his wife just had a baby last week. She was probably looking for an excuse to go. Yes. So what color are you gonna paint the painting? Yeah. Oh, yeah. I'll, I'll tap that's my wife that, I, I don't care. It might get a place to sit. Yeah. Joe's teeth are on, no. He's got a good shape. We, we call it, you would call it. Yeah, yeah. Sorry.
But, lucky, um.
Oh, yeah, she should be there.
Yeah. I know. It gives me life.
Yeah.
Okay. At least tomorrow. I think that is not true. I usually voice her, and you voice her. Exactly. You're supposed to be like.
Yes. They'll be taking, I'd say, Jim. You're not. And Jim, how are you? Good, babe, good.
I just hear.
So, judge it never.
The first day, eleven. Yes, I used to. I love, like, I'm not like.
Yeah. I know.
Hey, Steve, I love your skirt.
That was all my idea.
I know, it's so good. Everybody's wearing those great. No, that's why I'm not. Next year, now that I know that you're, for higher, I'm cheating, I'm cheating this year.
We don't, we don't win on Saturday, everybody else.
Everybody's prepared. For Saturday at five oh one. Say, I heart Middleton on this. Don't do those. Yeah, now, anything happens in the next week, you know. Just remember, I'll be. I have it, you, you start to take it away. And I saw it, but I didn't chase it.
We stay, because we do.
The who?
Oh, really?
Uh, maybe. It hurts. I don't know. Oh, well, he just called me. Hold on, I'll call you back in a spot. We did, uh, okay, so, let me draw transfer, transfer case. That was fine.
So by walking next door, another coming here.
I just tried to massage. We did, yeah. We did about. He is with analysts, yeah, so he's good. All right, yeah.
Very artificial.
Well, the first time. There were those problems. And then Amy and I went. Hey, how are you? Good to see you. Yeah. Yes. I mean, oh, we're like, and then I probably. I think that.
Okay, good, all right, bye.
Can you hear me? No, like now, kids yelling. Okay.
Yeah. I said, okay. He sets up that schedule. Yeah, that's, he's really good at that, too. Yes, okay.
Go ahead, call our monthly meeting for August twenty twenty two, town council. Take a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Carter, you want to say something?
Let's lead just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Robert Jones.
I'm here.
Marissa Gags.
Here.
Shane Davis.
Here.
Steve Denny.
Here.
Jeff Van.
Here.
All present county.
Okay, that's going to change is approval of minutes from prior meetings, which would be our August meeting, and then we have the public hearing meeting on the budget. Any questions or comments?
I've got copies here, but I don't see them.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for both.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second, I'll second that, I've got a second, Willie, roll call.
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Marissa Gags.
Hi.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Steve Denny.
Hi.
Jeff Van.
Hi.
Court treasuries report, Willie.
All right, you all see from the register here, we spent quite a bit of money as usual. And luckily we have it, so, and the general fund is at one point two three nine, so it's in good shape. Overall, I think everything is really good, so just keep it that way. Gary's buying beer later.
I second that.
Okay. That's all I have, unless if I have any questions.
Any questions, comments for clerk? Motion to approve. So move. Second. Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say. Thank you. Fire department, or chief? Mike, I may have just put you in the trip.
That's fine. Been a long time since I've been up here, so.
Welcome back.
I don't, I just kind of got called this afternoon, but the report, you have all the numbers up here, I was reading through it, fifty power incidents for the fire department in month of August. EMS, I'm not sure on, but I know the run they are on right now, I could tell you for the year, I give you the exit number. Uh, we are at one thousand five hundred seventy three runs for the year, right now, they're all, they just went out the door.
For the ambulance.
For ambulance, fire, okay, yes, so it's just busier and busier, I, territory, me looking from the outside in is proceeding very well, Mr. Denny's on board, and I think it's all going good. Myself, I'm dead set against it, have been from the start, but I want my family protected, I know it's gonna happen, I just, it's, it comes with the growth, and some of you are here when I was chief six, seven years ago, and I started fifteen years ago, telling them, well, these days it's gonna happen, and it's gonna happen, it's happened, so I'm looking forward to that as a past chief and everything, and the growth, and it's not our penalty like we used to have, so, and disappoints me, don't know anybody here anymore like we used to, but so we get living by Indianapolis. So, but, uh, fire, the grants, Chris updated you on a couple grants, or, but we're not gonna talk much about them, they're in the running, so I'll leave it at that.
Gonna be approved.
Yes, they have to be all approved on that, but everything is looking good.
Approved by the people's given us the grants, not us.
Right. And if it comes through, it's gonna be a huge deal for the community, huge, very, one of the biggest things I think happening in this community. If this happens, and I'm pretty sure it's going to, looking, way I'm looking at it. So if there's any questions, I will try to answer, or I will just tell you something and lie to you, so.
But, let me, let me go ahead, uh, take it out line here a little bit, because it's fire department. Today, late today, the approval for credit approval, you know anything about that?
The credit.
Turnout gear. That right, turnout gear, Jeff? Yes, okay. We, we can just talk about.
I know somewhat, but I'm not exactly.
It's like ninety thou, eighty eight thousand dollars, something like that.
Yeah.
For turnout gear, and the people that are buying it off of, we're gonna give a down payment of ten percent. Don't have to make a payment, the first payment, until a year from July first last month, when they get the first draw as fire territory. And the bank, I fit, which is not a local bank. And, uh, anyway, it's eighty eight thousand dollars, that's twenty nine thousand something per year due on one July. Actually, eighty, eighty seven thousand seven hundred dollars, eight, eight thousand seven hundred seventy dollar down payment. Leave the balance at seventy eight, nine thirty for three years, twenty nine thousand two hundred ninety two seventy eight. And, and what they're asking is, in this letter from the bank is, for signatures. Does the fire terr, I'm gonna ask Steve and Chief, is that in your budget?
I cannot answer that, my, Steve would have, I'd have to look back at the budget for it, um, but I, I, I can't tell you right now. Just talking from what I'm hearing, I don't take this for, but what I'm hearing is, yes, it's, Jake has told me he has the money, all appropriated for the year and everything, the problem they're running into, and not running into, the price increases. They have.
Twenty hundred dollars you set up on turnout.
Yeah, Tim Schwartz, I talked with him yesterday, fire trucks went up three times last year, and he said turnout gear is a lot worse than that. And they don't care if they get your business now or not, used to, because they wanna order gear, we're gonna hire people January first, but they have to have an order in, in October. They said, okay, we'll give you a down payment, you know, to get it locked in, they want sizing, and the gear that we always deal with, said, no, you have to have sizes in October, we won't sell it to you. So that, you know, we're not Indianapolis or Baltimore, somebody buying thousands, we're buying twenty sets or something, and that's an issue, and I think they're working with Hoosier and Shane on that, so, what I'm hearing. But I believe, and like I say, don't take it for, I'm just what I'm hearing, he has all that appropriated way, it's gonna be able to do all that.
So, yes, my question is to the rest of the council. Do we sign that paper for the fire territory now? I don't have a problem doing that as long as everybody else agrees, because that book is actually South Madison. Fire territory, July, or January one, but they want my name and the clerk treasurers name on there. That's reason why she.
Right, because it did the budget. So, when did this all come through?
Saturday. Reason why it's not on the agenda.
And this is what chief though, I, I think you talked about this. Talking about the, the, uh. No, this turnout gear is not the. You talked about equipment also, too. But that's the. Extract. Yeah, extraction. This is, this is a financing agreement. Least the agreement. Equipment. Banking special here and all the documents that are going along with it. It is a review. Nothing out of the ordinary, I, I do think that the town council is the proper body to sign it, as you are the providing unit of the fiscal fire territory. Obviously, the budget of the fire territories. What you rely on, the, the backstop of this and the requirement from the, the banking is gonna be the town council.
And you look at it, subject funds, funds available? We don't know for sure right now.
Well, under state law, if the funds are not deemed available by the town council, contracts. But you are, you wouldn't be signing a, you're signing an obligation.
Right, you're signing an obligation.
Right. I, I know they have to have this turnout gear, because you cannot buy OSHA standards and everything, we've done it for years, but times change, you can't hire Mr. Jones and give him Mr. Bowles' turnout gear, the discounts department, because something happens to him, they're gonna eat you alive. So when they go do these hires, they have to be fitted properly with OSHA, your gear, and that's what they're looking at, I know, I know it's not answering your question. To, I leasing the gear now, or lease purchase plan, is that's what everybody's doing now, what I'm hearing. So, like I say, I'm not answering your question, I know I'm dancing around, but.
Laying it on the table, because really, we need to get it done.
Right.
Or make sure that the council agrees, it's not on the agenda, could they come up with that? But I think it's important enough to talk about it, it's council, we, I'll sign it, you know, I think we should. But, other question, whether money in the budget. Or they're not, they're not.
Third question. That, and I cannot say a hundred percent. Well, will Chris be back on Monday? Yes, he'll be back Monday morning or afternoon. We have that special meeting Monday to discuss fire anyway, so could, could we wait till Monday, we get Chris here, we could just, the way, we have someone that knows what's in the budget, I mean.
Just, just like, don't disagree with what Shane saying, either, either Chris or Jay.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'll make sure one of those two are here. Yeah. So Monday is six o'clock, yeah?
Yeah.
Going out again. That, that way you're not out of the fire. Okay. Thanks, chief. Okay, thank you.
Times really changed, haven't they, Dan, or you speak to grab some gear that would freeze my picture and out you go.
Yeah, I mean, I've been, this is my fortieth year on the department.
Yeah.
When I come on, I got new Eagles gear, which nobody, except Mr. Sparwick, so.
Grabber again.
Captain trailer.
David. How are you? Good. All right, so school's back, we all know that, Officer Matt Eby completed his one year probation period with us, it's, uh, he jumped from Eagles PD over to us. Victoria Spars, Congresswoman, came to town last month, we provided security for the event, there was no issues, good turnout. Uh, we got our yearly mandate done for our defensive tactics training with Officer Bertram, since he's our instructor, we had some assistance from Kevin Barco with that as well. Public safety day, as always, good turnout. And Officer Silva started the academy last month as well, so he is there, I believe the twenty ninth was his first day, and he is there until the summer of the sixteenth.
Any questions for the town?
Thank you.
Court.
Council, I have nothing to add to whatever you so far. Outside, first time in eighteen years I've been threatened in court, was interesting. We had a person who was quite upset. Thank goodness that there was, at that time, we had the police officers to take care of the situation. Sometimes are changing. Any question? Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Park.
Much like the judge, I have nothing to add other than what's in front of you. Do you have any questions for me? Be happy to do my best to answer them.
Let's come down to the street clothes to the park.
I don't have those streets.
Any questions for?
Would you get rid of that pile of dirt down there? I've got tar people last week.
It will be gone. It will be gone shortly. We've got plenty of places to use it. That's for sure.
I do have one. I haven't been down to the ball field yet. Have you started on the. Skipping to the.
We have not. We have not. We're still waiting on one more quote to come in. Hopefully that'll be it and we can make that decision at our September meeting. So.
Okay, Paul, thank you. Planning at eighteen.
Funny. They have our building permit summary report in front of you. Let me know if you have any questions. Just some updates. Our historic design guidelines, removing or updating that is pretty on a date. The one sixteen, one twenty West State Street property owner has been given till September BZA to completely finish sealing the building. And they've been given until April twenty twenty three at the BGA meeting to fix all structural issues. So we're gonna be monitoring that. And then after those have all been approved as remediated, we will work on fire code violations. And then the building can reopen. Planting question as far as they go, we have one rezone on the agenda that's actually gonna be voted on tonight. For the Bagley property. It was approved at our August meeting. We didn't have one this month. Site plan reviews, our Three Rivers Federal Credit Union and Starbucks Development has officially been approved. So they're working on moving dirt, putting in infrastructure. They're considering moving the buildings closer to each other, but that shouldn't delay anything. Same puppy, same access, all of that. Subdivisions moving right along our transportation projects. We do have a new transit project. There was an old defunded business park trail that the NPO presented to us. I think it probably started in like seventeen or eighteen. But then it ran out of money from the state. Money has been found, so now they're allocating money to that. We have RFPs out right now. They're due the end of September. And that is a multi-use path that goes from the business park, connects over to Taylor and then using the sidewalks. Get up to the park. Really nice trail. Very excited to be working on it. That's all I've got. Any questions?
The falls is a road that made. So I said that we're working on this.
They're they're working on it. I don't know if eventually they're going to just free shave and pave it because we still have to go out and test it to make sure that they put the line down. If we find there's still isn't, they could choose to go back and patch it, but it seems like it would just be. Less expensive to rip it all out, put a new one in, but that's their choice. So they are working on it. I'm not sure how far to completion they are because we have a lot of spots that we're missing on.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, old business. Old business is ordered twenty two dash thirty three adoption of the twenty twenty three budget. We held our public meeting. Two weeks ago and. At the open meeting like we're supposed to. Think everybody sitting up there seeing the budget, worked on the budget. And has agreed to the budget, so. Questions or comments? If not, entertain a motion on ordinance twenty two dash thirty three. I'll second. Let's do a roll call, please.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Robert Jones. Steve Danny. Bruce Skaggs. Jeff Bad.
Okay. New business. Resolution R twenty two dash oh nine additional appropriation for fire department. You want to talk or you want?
This is an appropriate additional preparation that was left off.
It's twenty nine thousand dollars. It's correction to the budget. Comments or questions? And we have the funds available to do so. Make a motion to approve.
Your president on this week, we have to make public comment of the additional appropriations.
I need to close.
Over the public hearing, if there's anybody like.
Open the public hearing on resolution twenty two dash oh nine. Additional appropriation of fire department to the fire department. It's twenty nine thousand dollars, which is a correction to the budget. I guess that's what you say. Money is there to do this. Any public input at all? That's a good thing. I'll close the public hearing and. This time I would ask for a motion to approve resolution twenty two dash oh nine. Second motion to approve. I've got a motion. Can I have a second? Thank you both of you. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say. Thank you. Next thing on new businesses, the GDI contract. I will go ahead and let Jeff talk about that.
Yes, this is more of a redevelopment commission issue than a council. The issue I asked Karen some time back, but that is the agenda. But really, it's more properly of the redevelopment commission's agenda, but you as the fiscal body should still be wary with those that these funds are gonna be paid out of. Redevelopment funds, but this involves a real estate contract. It was entered into by the redevelopment commission back in early twenty eighteen. Which gave a GDI holdings, a ability to market real estate town owned real estate. And at a with an option to purchase at a certain price. Subs went to that very shortly after that, the the town agreed through its council and the redevelopment commission, its redevelopment authority. To sell land out there. For a substantially reduced price. That's the way we're talking about is the one hundred twenty seven acres out there where the community. And. The twenty eighteen contract since expired with GDI, there have been discussions on extending that contract. However, at this point, the town and both GDI have agreed to terminate the contract. And to make GDI whole for the land that the town transferred, which was subject to the the option contract that we we sold. Everybody's agreed on the amount. That's forty three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. A GDI will approve this on the twelfth and then the redevelopment commission will approve that at the regular meeting this month. Doesn't need action today, just for your information. So. With the GDI under, I've read the contract and I've read the agreement from back in eighteen. So for the town. I just wanna make sure I understand this. So the town. Pretty much sold that land for a dollar. But GDI, who did absolutely nothing in that process, wants paid per their contract. Yes. And so we, I know we don't have a contract with GDI anymore, but forty, almost forty four thousand dollars for them to do absolutely nothing. Why would we want to do business with them ever again? Yeah, I I think that was one of the reasons. I'm just speculating here that both parties have decided to move on is that. And we have no recourse legally to try to fight this. I I think it's pretty cut and dry. This would be the amount of the segment sideways. And how did we come up with the forty three seven fifty? That was the amount of they would have been entitled to had they sold the land at the purchase price, at the contract price, what they're. So that would have been the thirty thousand times twenty five acres. I think that's where it came up, but it was. See, I don't have, I'll have a better answer.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. I'll have I'll have you that calculation. I think we based on the expected what it would sell for. What what they would have profited had they sold the land at market price, the difference between the thirty thousand and minus thirty seven five. All right. This is what we would have made if we would have negotiated the the contract, but we did absolutely nothing, but we still deserve that. I'd be willing to go to court for that. Yes, well, the redevelopment commission, your honor, Steve, will have to. That was my next question. I don't remember any of this being discussed in in twenty twenty two.
But I think Steve's asking how did we get an mediation without involving the RDC?
The president, the president of the RDC was involved. Okay. All right. But we'll buy more information for your commission. Okay.
I can answer that part. Wait, would you like me to interject?
Yes, I would love some interjection.
Okay, so. GDI had a sub, because they're not a broker, they had a broker. And so. We had a contract with GDI and then to. Then they had an exclusive contract with the broker and I can't I can't remember the name of them. And so the broker is so and they had exclusive rights to sell that. And so when the town sold it for a dollar, we took away. An obligation to pay them for the market value. And that was never done. So GDI came to us and said, look, we don't want any money out of the deal, but we were on the hook to our subcontractor. And so. And then the 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 amount, the forty three thousand is based on. What the broker would have gotten for that, the minimum. Amount that could be that was in the contract that land could be sold to GDI for.
That was a piece I was missing, but that was GDI reliance on that contract we signed in eighteen and entered into a contract third party. Now they owe. Third party banks on towns, so transferring profit. So they that that thanks God, but.
Yep, no problem.
Deeper. Thank you for the information.
Any more questions? RDC will. If not, I'll move on. Ordinance twenty two dash thirty one admitting the zone map for Bagley property.
So in August, the planning commission approved or recommended a favorable recommendation for the rezone from. Two or act one, I'm sorry, I don't remember off the top of my head, to SF four for a ninety nine lot subdivision. That still has to go through primary and whatnot on the Bagley property. So the representatives from the development are here. If you have any questions for them or for myself.
If I have any questions? Laid out.
A list of commitments as well that we have that council review, so.
I'm gonna make the assumption that approval for the planning is a first reading.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm requesting a. Motion for ordinance twenty two dash thirty one admitting the zone map for the Bagley property.
Adopted, stated, that appears in your Google Drive that is assigned by the petitioner.
Question, comments? Three people should narrow the chairs on trying.
Aaron Lev did the park department. I'm just curious if they worked out the details on the trails.
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet.
But it'll.
Guaranteed.
You're approving it, so maybe there's ninety nine more houses in there?
Yes.
And it is in line with the town's comprehensive plan.
As far as their initial layout, it fits most aspects of our UVO as it stands.
Does this include the separate piece that was on by foundation?
Not the one to the west, but the one to the south.
South.
Yes, it'll have the Kendallwood west extension and that will be the entrance to the subdivision.
The seven acres next to the church? Not that many acres.
There's the one above the church and that's a little slice, a little rectangle. It's just big enough for a road.
So they, the foundation will still owns property there.
No, on it to the west, but I believe they are gonna need to get to.
To the south?
They do, but they sold it.
This still doesn't have the road to go into the ball acres, correct?
Correct.
Pedestrian access.
Just a walking trail. Okay.
We have some safety issues.
That's that's one thing I. Being back all the time, all the kids run around that to me is a.
But it could potentially, if we can find a safe solution, connect back there.
Any other comments or questions, please? I make a motion that we approve twenty two dash thirty one admitting the zone map for the Bagley property.
I'll say.
Quick motion, a second for ordinance twenty two dash thirty one admitting the zone map for the Bagley property. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say. Or this is passed. Other comments? You've already had one, Tom.
Okay, with all this new housing additions for you, you just approved it for ninety nine more. We need to have some police officers, but you don't have any protection. Most of the time we're going.
Okay, I'm I'm gonna go ahead. Lucas. Let's go ahead and talk about it, what the budget's been approved then. Is that okay with you? The council has been working on this forever and I mean this. We were hired two new police officers. In February, we're hired one February, March. And in June, July, we're gonna hire another one. That's the way the chief and the captain wanted to do it.
Okay, so by the end of next year, we'll have four new officers.
I don't know, Conny. All I know is we're hired in in this budget. In this budget. Two new police officers. Money's been approved, cause we got reoccurring money. And it's taken us a long time to get to that point. But we're there, we'll have the money every year so we can hire these police officers. And it's not because we're getting more money, cause we're building all these houses, it's just. Between the LIT and property taxes, okay? And it's, it takes a while, okay? It just takes a while. Everybody, I know, and we're given a real good raise, this council is. Now, I'm getting on my soapbox, cause I, I normally don't say too much about this. But the police officers, all of them, are getting the biggest raise since I've been on the council. It puts us closer to where we ought to be compared to other communities in a geographical area close to us. When I say other communities, that like, is like, I'm not saying Carmel, don't, don't compare us with Carmel. Captain Sidwell. Captain Sidwell used to do it to me, and I'd say, we're not Carmel, we're not Westfield. Okay, we're not. So, we, we've come a long way. This council has this year for the police department, the fire department's growing, we're making some big changes. It, it takes time and money. And, and we've done it this time. Does that answer your question, Con?
Yes, but everyone in council needs to know that sometimes they only have one officer.
I, I know, Con, we're, we're trying, that's reason why we're hiring two more. We got one in, in, uh, trending right now, we got one that's been off for an accident. So we're too short. And. Schedule's been a bummer for the cap. So, we're, we're there, we're, we're. Any other public comments? Maybe a juror, thank you.